Okay, thank you for joining us this evening for the special planning commission meeting. It is October twenty-third and it is now six P M. If we could, please have the pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Wade, if you could lead us in a pledge.
I apologize to the United States of America and to the citizens of Oklahoma, Illinois, to all citizens of Kansas, Kansas City, and all counties and districts.
Thank you. If, uh, we could get, oop, roll call, please.
Absolutely. District one Vincent Ringheiden.
Present.
District two Richard Way.
Present.
District three Robert Scagliotti.
Present.
District four Robert Gibson.
Present.
District five Celeste Toledo Boca Negra.
Present.
Okay, all commissioners present, we have a forum.
Fantastic, thank you. Consent agenda, has there motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Make motion we adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero, thank you. Public hearing. Item five point one, PLN two zero 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 five one Lee subdivision project.
Hi, good evening Chair, fellow commissioners, members of the public, thank you so much for coming out again tonight to take a look at the Lee subdivision project. County file number PLN twenty zero zero five one located at two nine one Old Ranch Road. My name is Ariel Goodsky, Principal Planner for the county, and I look forward to discussing some of the items that the planning commissioner requested us to come back with tonight. And so those items included, uh, looking at the affordable housing plan that had been provided. Um, looking at two-story, um, homes being required to then move to one-story around, uh, the border. We'll also be discussing potential therapy road improvement, uh, that had come up and a drop tax and bike connectivity. So for the affordable housing, uh, plan, what had been, uh, presented at the last, uh, meeting included option one, which was thirty-one bedroom attached J eighty rentals. Um, de-restricted for fifty-five years, zero, uh, moderate income. Uh, so this is, you have thirty units total, they're a hundred percent low income, a hundred percent rentals, de-restricted for fifty-five years. It would equate to five more affordable units than the county, uh, requirement and, uh, seventeen point five, uh, percent. Um, above the fifteen percent. Option two, um, that had been, uh, presented at the last meeting was the twenty-one bedroom attached junior ADUs rental units de-restricted for fifty-five years. And then six moderate income, uh, duets. We have a total of twenty-six total units. Um, there are a mix of low and moderate income, mix of rentals and for sale. You'll have, uh, rent, the rentals would be de-restricted for fifty-five years, but for sale duets would be restricted for, uh, thirty years. It would be two more affordable units than the county requirement, so sixteen point one percent affordability, uh, of the fifteen percent requirement. The third option that was brought before you, um, that would include more duets. Um, so it'd be fifteen one-bedroom attached junior ADU rentals, um, de-restricted for, uh, uh, actually fifty-five years, my apologies for a mis typo, and then the night, nine moderate income duets. So twenty-four units total, it'd be a mix of low and moderate income, uh, mix of rentals and for sale, um, again, with de-restrictions. However, um, this option did not result in a full additional, uh, unit. And so, um, it has to be a minimum of fifteen point seven percent, so a point seven percent to round up to a whole unit. Other than that, our inclusionary require admit, um, requires just that a fee be paid. So, um, if applicant tonight is going to, um, you know, uh, build, uh, that extra unit, then we would, um, that one could be considered further. Uh, and then just to review, um, our inclusionary organs. So the options are varying from our, uh, onsite rental unit requirements by having five percent of all the units be very low, five percent low and five percent moderate. Um, as we saw, we had either just the low income or we had a mix of low and moderate, um, uh, uh, sorry, we had just low for the rentals and then, um, the for sale, uh, was just moderate. And then the onsite inclusion requirement, um, if it's for sale requires seven point seven percent for low and seven point seven percent for moderate. Um, it also, uh, would deviate from the number, um, of bedrooms in development. So, uh, the two point two rooms, um, for multifamily, um, housing. And then also would deviate from the, um, or, uh, three point two if it was single family. And then also is deviating from the unit sizes, uh, for single family duplexes. Um, as the one bedroom requires at nine hundred fifty square feet for a one bedroom. Um, and again, just hitting on that our ordinance may consider, uh, junior ADUs. Junior ADUs per se law can't be above the hundred under square feet, um, so we would just, uh, considerations. But, uh, in order to meet the alternative mechanism compliance, they do, and I underline to have to have the production more affordable units. Um, so, uh, in reviewing your options, to put that into consideration. Um, and they, uh, can meet it through the construction of rental units adjacent to the for-sale projects. Um, so what you saw included in your packet, but just, uh, a couple tweaks was some revisions to the condition, um, of approval for the affordable housing plan. Um, we added in there that the affordable housing plan will open only to the rental property manager or rental management enforcement plan. Deed restrictions for the junior ADUs, for the more the affordable housing plan would include, but not only to the, those party running affordable for sale units and deed restrictions. Um, and then, uh, notwithstanding any of these other provisions, that one of these options would be chosen by the board of supervisors. And if the decision was resolution, um, the three options that were presented, uh, to you, unless tonight the recommendation would be choose one of these, um, specifically. And just a couple of edits that if you, um, in what you approved tonight, if we could also approve, um, an edit to the conditions of approval and also the portable housing plans, um, in the packet tonight is specify duplexes and it should be, uh, duets. There's, um, a slight difference, uh, duets, uh, have actually, they're on separate parcels and so, um, just it's a minor correction, but that would be included in, um, tonight's approval. And then there was a minor correction because it's depending on which affordable housing option you picked on page seven of the resolution. There was a discussion at the very top of the page, um, about the, um, about the square footage and that the affordable units, um, started at twenty-five hundred square foot referring to duets. Now, if you picked an affordable housing option that didn't include the duets and that, uh, that sentence could be considered, um, inaccurate and so it just was changed that the twenty-five hundred square foot laws, uh, referred to the duets in that, in that description. So, um, very minor. Um, in our last meeting, the planning commission had asked, um, about enforcement of the J ADUs. And since the affordable housing plan includes this as a condition of approval, um, it's not something that was required for that applicant to be, um, submitted for compliance at the sign. It's something that we would be working, um, on, uh, prior to final map approval. Um, however, SAP did, uh, look into this and contacted, um, other jurisdictions about their ADU, J ADU deed restrictions. Um, we contacted H U D, um, we've contacted nonprofits such as Community Services Development Corporation, House Keys, Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, Housing and Housing E, Community Housing Improvement Systems and Planning Association. Um, no one that we contacted had an existing exact similar, um, project with market rate for sale and a deed restricted, uh, J ADU. There was some similar projects, uh, but both units would be, uh, deed restricted. However, they did provide, um, a good amount of feedback, um, as we worked to developing, um, that management plan for the J ADUs. The, uh, next item of discussion was the one-stories along the border properties. And so, um, uh, off of Old Ranch Road, the lots, uh, to those existing homes on the western, uh, boundary, um, would be limited to the one-story, so that's lots one through eight, um, lot one twenty-three and lots one thirty-six through, uh, one forty-one. Um, in addition, um, on the southwestern boundary of the project, that, uh, that's like cross from the Fairview Corner subdivision, uh, would likewise be limited to lots one nineteen through one twenty-two to one-story. And, um, and this was included as part of the mission of approval. However, um, in looking at other lots, lots one seventy-one through eighty-five, lots ninety-eight, lots one fourteen through one eighteen, um, we did not include that as a good law to be a condition of approval to be limited to one-story. And that, those reasons were that the distance of separation between the homes on these lots, uh, for the future Fairview Corners is considerable. Um, with the minimum distance at eighty-nine feet, maximum distance at more than a hundred and fifteen feet of separation. So there's a great amount of space in between, um, the houses, um, on, on either side. And, um, so an example that would be that across the street, um, from each other in a normal subdivision, they're approximately seventy-five feet. So, um, this is, you know, exceeding, um, that, so these were not included. So the condition of approval that was, uh, included in part of the packet was that one-story homes, the following lots, uh, on the western boundary map would be limited to one-story. Um, as mentioned, lots one through eight, lots one nineteen through one twenty-three, and lots one thirty-six through one forty-one. Um, moving on to the Fairview frontage improvements, so the press room, planning commission wants to look at, um, requiring, uh, uh, if, if we could do those frontage improvements. Um, it might be a little bit hard to, uh, see on, on this. Uh, currently, the county right-of-way is a hundred and four, um, feet. Um, in order to do the, uh, improvements of the curb, uh, sidewalk, um, pavement, you need a hundred and ten feet of right-of-way. In addition, we need another ten feet of, uh, construction, uh, easement, uh, along there. So there isn't enough, uh, existing right-of-way to be able to, uh, done those improvements, um, with, with the existing county right-of-way. Um, we would need to have, um, easements along both of the frontage, um, properties. Uh, the, both of those owners were contacted, um, one was contacted multiple times, four times with no response. The other one did meet with the applicant for a few hours and, um, was, was not interested in, um, selling that easement at the, uh, frontage. And, uh, in addition, um, also it was looked at, you know, uh, undergrounding the, the, uh, holes along this road. Um, so for utilities, they need to be, um, uh, done properly and needs to be done, um, behind where the future pavement and, uh, sidewalk would be. And that would, um, ultimately be not in, uh, county right-of-way, but in, um, the, uh, those, uh, property owners, uh, property. Um, and so again, it, um, was out of where we could, um, be able to, uh, improve those, uh, specific, um, places without, um, having that actual property franchise to be able to do that. Um, however, we did, uh, take a look at, you know, alternatively, how could, um, we, uh, address this? And so the following road improvement, uh, condition approval was included that the temp fees would be paid by the applicant. So there's temp fees that were already included, but there additionally would be temp fees paid by the applicant to be used by the county at the county sole. And as per such a direction for funding the construction of the ultimate or partial Fairview Road frontage improvements, it says China construction that the county determines is reasonable and as of this current, uh, discussion. Uh, in ignition, the applicant shall create the southbound turn pocket, turning left from Fairview Road onto the Old Ranch Road, uh, shown on the site plan through, uh, re-striping. Um, there was, uh, in discussion, um, kind of two options depending on the pedestrian crossing. So unless a pedestrian crossing is required, a set fourth and D below, the applicant shall create a southbound acceleration lane, turning left out of the Old Ranch Road onto Fairview Road as shown on the site plan through re-striping. And then if a pedestrian crossing is required by the county, then a reason, then a reasonable pedestrian crossing shall be designed and constructed by the applicant to to the reasonable satisfaction of the county public legislature and the southbound acceleration lane described in C above shall not be created by the applicant. Now, the reason being is, um, because, uh, the traffic engineers do not recommend that you have pedestrian crossing, um, where there's an acceleration lane. And so that, uh, so that's why it's kind of an either or, so, um, so it would depend on, uh, how ultimately, uh, commission that pedestrian crossing. Um, so we did, we were asked to look at including a drop tax that was included in, in tonight's, uh, uh, packet on sales tax to get sent allowed by controlling law. All contractors and subcontractors working to construct their project homes shall attain a business license to invest in San Benito County and show use of best effort to construct. Their suppliers designate San Benito County as a point of sale for the materials to be used in construction. The purpose of this condition pool is to make best effort to ensure that all fair and affordable California sales and use taxes are paid via San Benito County as a designated point of sale. However, in no event shall this condition pool fire a landowner, contractors or subcontractors to pay sales and use tax to multiple jurisdictions on the same project construction material. So they buy a screw, um, but they're not being taxed in San Benito County and they be Santa Fe, so they have to be, uh, one of the others. And then, um, we also to look at bicycle connectivity and condition sixty-one was included bicycle pedestrian connectivity. Um, as reads applicant shall provide bicycle pedestrian connectivity between future trauma to the north and Gavlin College to the south through its road three at the north of its property. And then through applicant's internal street network and then through its connection to the dividend home subdivision, then through dividend home subdivision street network and then to Gavlin College. It's a dividend home subdivision street network connects directly to. Um, there was also, uh, I did, I'm not presenting it, uh, but there was a request to have, um, fire marshal here, Charles the Builder is here, if you have questions for him. That was, um, and tonight, um, after our, the recommendation is actually discussion deliberation and the conditions of approval to be adopted. Um, so getting, uh, correction on the affordable housing, um, keys. SAP then recommends that, um, with those decisions, you certify environmental impact report. And, um, that includes adopting mitigation measures that reduces any significant environmental impacts that are feasible. And adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting plan that has no significant considerations necessary as all impacts be, be able to lessen significant level. You adopt the best intended map subject to the board supervisor's approval of the zone change and community combined district. Also, the, uh, commending the board supervisor's, uh, zone change and a community combined district and the affordable housing plan for approval after, uh, this, uh, discussion and deliberation. And, uh, recommend to the board supervisor request the way of department operation. And I'm just happy to take any questions at this time. Um, I have the applicant here as well, um, if you'd like to begin with, so.
Does the applicant wish to speak now, before we go to public comment?
I think in the interest of everybody's time, it might be better to let you go to public comment and then I can come back and maybe we can talk about these items one by one.
Sounds like a plan, Bill. Let's open up public comment, please.
Okay, we're gonna start, um, with our comment cards in chambers, then move to our hands through Zoom. So first I have Mary Anderson, please approach the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners and Chair, my name is Mary Anderson, I reside on Old Ranch Road. Uh, please consider the following before making your determinations on this project. I've known Mr. Lee and his family for many years, attending family gatherings and previously enjoyed having the Lee family as my neighbors. Unfortunately, this project was not fully disclosed and was not designed keeping a friend and a neighbor's privacy into consideration, only determining the money factor, thus ending our friendship. Building seven or eight residential units along my property prints line to cover the entire length of my home, my barn and my arena, leaves me with absolutely no privacy. Um, a good neighbor fence, um, that allows me to have in wind damage to deal with eight property owners, and I think it's unfair. A masonry wall at a minimum for sound and some privacy. Mr. Lee currently doesn't acknowledge or appreciate the fact that the McDonald family and myself have continued to maintain weed abatement and tree trimming on Old Ranch Road for many years. Mr. Lee supports many projects in which he obtains resources to donate to Martha's Kitchen and Community Food Bank of San Benito and has paid significantly well to do so. He's not working in a soup kitchen or feeding the homeless or providing shelters as one would think from all of the letters of support of this project. Uh, the Lee residence and massive barn warehouse proposed to be torn down if this project is approved, could have been included in a smaller development to be a senior center, a youth activity, a cooling center. But that wouldn't provide the profit margin sought by Mr. Lee. Dividend Homes Fairview Corners development was approved and has no date to begin construction of these housing units. The owner of that development did mention the fact that he's possibly interested in selling. In that case, there would be no second exit from this Lee development. All those vehicles would come down Old Ranch Road. Uh, right now at a, the location for a high school, this Lee development is not gonna build us a high school. There's no guarantee, uh, at this point. I ask the commissioners to visit this, the proposed site and see that the development would significantly have traffic impact on Fairview Road and Old Ranch. This development is not going to lower the housing needs for low-income families as they look to rent, not to purchase and for governance assistance. Uh, I myself qualify for low-income housing and I am in law enforcement and I sit on twenty-five and shore and praise your lake. I'm just fortunate enough to have this ranch as my quote, you know, little piece of paradise. I will be surrounded by houses. I'm on a tractor, there's gonna be complaints of dust, there's gonna be complaints of, you know, hauling, you know, my equines. Thank you.
Devin Pack.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for, uh, hearing me this evening. I am, uh, up here to speak in favor of approval of this project, uh, because I believe that it is coherent with the county's housing goals and affordable housing goals. And more importantly, with supporting our secondary e-education infrastructure. The construction of the new Gavlin campus here in Hollister is a bold venture and to explain the necessity of this project, you know, those, uh, added ADUs are going to be going towards workforce housing, towards teacher housing. And to explain the importance of that, I need to speak about what is commonly known in the academic world as the adjunct shuffle. Generally, at junior colleges such as Gavlin, most of the teachers are adjunctive instructors. And adjunct professors are paid basically by the unit, by the class. So if you're teaching about twelve units, you're getting about five thousand a month in terms of the paycheck. Uh, in order to really be able to afford to live in the Bay Area, you have to basically maximize your teaching time by engaging in what's known as the adjunct shuffle, which is a shuffle where you're teaching two to three courses at four different schools in a ring around the Bay Area. Now, the problem with attracting professors to teach at Gavlin is that basically, if you're an adjunct professor at any other place, it's a, it's a two-hour trip. It's a, it's a detour, it is off the beaten track. And so we need workforce housing in order to enable Gavlin to be able to attract and retain good teaching staff that will enable this new campus to thrive. Uh, that is the primary reason that I'm urging you to adopt that, but I would also point to the fact that over the past, uh, two to four years, uh, the applicant has been making extensive, uh, modifications to this project, expanding the number of, uh, affordable housing units, uh, working out a wastewater treatment plan, expanding the, uh, amount of distance and burial there with the Lial, uh, vineyards. And lastly, I would urge the, uh, commission to support this application, not only because of the recommendations of the RMA, but also for the importance of a consistency in the approvals process and that effect on the greater business, uh, climate. Right now, San Benito County is under-invested and under-developed and that is because there is a widespread perception in the Bay Area that San Benito is unfriendly towards business and development. I am just asking this commission to keep the consistency in this application processes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth Capron.
Chair Gibson and Commission, um, I've spoken to you a number of times on this proposal. I'm still frustrated that we seem to be ignoring our affordable housing ordinance. Um, as, as, um, laid out for you in the staff report, this project as proposed does not meet the requirements of the affordable housing ordinance and staff is recommending that you approve it under an exception. Um, I've, I've laid out for you before at some of the other meetings, um, these are one-bedroom units, the requirement in the affordable housing unit ordinance is for an average of three-point-two bedroom units. Um, these are small units, the requirement in the affordable housing unit is for single bedrooms. Bedroom units to be nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet, these are, um, half that size. Uh, so you'd have thirty, uh, bedrooms as opposed to eighty bedrooms, which would be required in the ordinance. You'd be building fifteen thousand square feet as opposed to thirty-six thousand square feet as compared to what's required in the ordinance. And I believe that in order for you to make this decision, you need to make a finding that what is being proposed in the ordinance provides an equivalent benefit to the county. And I don't understand how you can make that finding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Lampy?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, you know, it, it really hurts my heart that we can be so unfriendly and so unneighborly. How could you lose a friendship if you said you've had a friendship all these years and then you quit being a friend because you get, you think you're not going to get your way? That's sad. And think that it's my, 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 and that we're here and we've got our little piece of paradise. You know, there's a larger paradise waiting for us. It's much bigger. And in order to attain that, I believe it's the way we treat our neighbors. And when we do unto the least of these, and there are people that are struggling for a home. And yes, I understand we were trying to get home a couple of days ago and we were in traffic for an hour and a half. That's frustrating, but Mr. Lee didn't create that problem and is not going to solve the problem if these houses get built or not. But there are a lot of people who are just desiring their own little piece of paradise. And I was reading, um, Vice President Kamala Harris wants to build three million homes her first term in office. And the headline from the New Yorker, is that enough? Is that enough housing? Whoever wins the presidency will be inheriting an unaffordable housing market with no easy way to fix it. Years of high interest rates have made it difficult for buyers to afford a new home while sellers are reluctant to give up monthly payment. And one of the things that I hear so often now is telling people to go back where they came from. How, how horrible. What if we said that to our farm workers who come here and we'd say, go back where you came from, but it's perfectly fine to say that for somebody who's maybe wanting to escape a large city like San Jose and have their children to have an opportunity to enjoy the things that we do? You know, how, how cruel that we could say that. Now, Mr. Lee, yes, I am very biased on toward him because, you know, I am a food angel. And if it wasn't for Mr. Lee, there would be about three hundred and fifty families every week that would not have food. And during COVID, it was eleven hundred families that this gentleman brought into Hollister in my parking lot. And not only did he bring it, one day he was helping my husband unload the truck and actually fell and broke his foot. He probably don't want me telling you that. But I've seen this man labor alongside us. I've seen the work that he's done to bring food to the food insecure here. And it's not just that. These houses make sense. People need a place to live. And yes, it may not be affordable. If you bought your house and it was three hundred thousand twenty years ago, the house is worth a million dollars now. So don't base it on what you're paying for taxes. Thank you.
Bridget Beaumont Thorpe?
Hi, good evening. Um, I just have a comment, um, about, uh, lands of Lee. Um, so I, I live in Santana Ranch. I was approved a specific plan in two thousand ten. And they're still building one thousand one hundred homes. Where have you been? Where are the duds? Where's the affordable housing? Right now, they're still building these one thousand one hundred homes. No affordable housing. That's first of it. Lands of Lee, I feel it's dense housing and the ADUs are, in my opinion, is a, is, uh, just a lie. You know, it's not affordable housing. It's a little, little tiny place. Rent. It's not enough. It sounds like a potential taking of adjacent land may be, may be required to create access, oops. Sorry. I turned my phone off. Uh, create access to the lands of Lee division, creating sidewalks, pedestrian crossing, and other general county uses. It uses our private property but managed by county. Who's managing the ADU? And how does a homeowner insurance cover the ADU? And who's liable if a ADU resident, uh, has a company and is hurt? Who, who covers the, the insurance? I mean, um, it sounds really messy to me. And on another note, I just want to add, you know, the traffic is just getting worse. My son told me now he has to get up at four o'clock, so he makes it at, uh, so, so he makes it to work at six o'clock. At four forty-five, you already have a backup on the intersection, um, twenty-five cent per liter all the way to the roundabout. I mean, people maybe have to get up at two o'clock to get to work in the future to keep building and not improving the, the, uh, infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Nelson?
Good evening and thank you for the time. I'm a little confused on Landsley. When we were here before, we were talking about ADUs. And what my brain heard was that the ADUs would be under the purview of the county. That the county would be collecting the rent, the county would be taking care of, um, past due and potential removal of people in an ADU to then bring in others. If I'm mistaken on that, I apologize, but with that understanding, my brain goes to my son, who has his own insurance agency, who said, Mom, somebody living in an ADU that you don't actually control, but it's on your property, who twists their ankle and breaks their leg. You're liable, but you're not getting any revenue for this per se. You're liable for any injuries on your property, but the county is taking care of the people and collecting the funds, giving the homeowners some residual of that. It seems like a taking. It seems like I own this lot, but part of it isn't mine. It belongs to the county's use and for fifty-five years, God forbid I live another fifty-five years. I just have to tell you, my husband would have a heart attack tonight and be done with it. But other than that, it just seems messy. It doesn't seem very clear. It doesn't seem very clean. We don't have an access in and out. We have to go over other people's property to even access. Then we have developments on both ends that don't have two entry exits for safety, but they're reliant upon each other. But if one doesn't build, then you have one access. So we're still at the same teetering problem. This doesn't seem to be solving anything. I appreciate the fact that we're trying to provide housing for less fortunate. But when we're talking about less fortunate being teachers at Gavlin College, is that the population we're really looking at? We have so many less fortunate that are looking for housing that need to put their children into safe places to be able to do their homework, to have food on the table, and to have an opportunity to go to school. Having a single one unit for somebody who's going to do their student teaching at Gavlin is going to fly the coop and go somewhere else. I'm not sure this is the best use of our county and of the Landsley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elias Salinas?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and, um, Planning Commissioners. As you're aware, I am in favor of this project. I have been coming here for years, supporting this project. And Mr. Lee continues to be compliant and continues to jump hoops. Everything you've asked, he comes back and he gives it to you. There was a lawsuit. There was a token agreement. The token agreement was rescinded by the board supervisors. I don't know why. So then there's now a stay in that same lawsuit. I want to remind you, as you, I'm sure you're aware, but I'm going to remind you that San Benito County is still out of compliance with the health enaliment. When I was here last, I mentioned El Grove and that the city of Gilroy had just made a, made a decision. And now the city of Gilroy is, is now facing the builder's remedy. Mr. Lee has been more than gracious and it has been a lot of resources that has been spent on this project. The Santana Ranch homes also have these ADUs already built into them with a small garage. And some of the folks out there, they're not complaining that they're small, nine-hundred square feet units. Anderson Homes also has over three hundred apartments that are going to eventually be completed. And they have a list of people and they're offering also sectioning out them. A fifty-five year and over individual does not need a large space when they're just a single individual. The project here meets the needs of numerous individuals that are already in our community. The Lands of Lee project, you have asked many a things and you actually, actually have gone over the requirements. But yet Mr. Lee comes back and he wants to work with you. There is absolutely no way that you can require him to get that property from the property owners that you already knew were not going to be friendly to him to make an agreement. You're overstepping on that and that is not a requirement of the planning commission specifically when it comes to already being compliant and the builder's remedy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move to Zoom. I currently have no hands raised, but I'm gonna allow at least thirty seconds for anyone who would like to raise their hand for public comment.
Is there anyone in the chambers that has not brought up a comment card? Wonderful.
Given about ten more seconds. Okay, Chair. I have no more public comments.
Okay, public comment is closed. Would the applicant like to present?
Yeah, thank you. Um, obviously, and you just heard it a moment ago, I'm trying to work with you guys to give you the things that you're asking for. Um, you heard Ariel's presentation. I, I can't do one hundred percent of what you asked for six weeks ago, but I've come back with, with the best that I can. And I think probably the best thing to do is to talk about the specific, uh, you know, the specific items here one by one and maybe field your questions or whatnot, if, if that works. I don't know, Cherry, you have a thought on part topic or something? Okay, so the, the affordable housing, probably the most difficult topic, so maybe we take that on first. Uh, I only found out a couple of minutes before that that option three was fractionally shy of creating that additional boost. So, um, I would be willing to provide another duet on that in order to get the, the additional unit there, um, so that it, it is above what would otherwise, the, the number of units that would be, would be required. I know when we were here six weeks ago, I, I heard some of you say, hey, I really just don't like the ADUs. I don't want any ADUs in this. The problem that I have is that I was asked two years ago by the board to eliminate the VMT. And the way that we were able to eliminate the VMT was by bringing in the low-income, de-restricted ADUs. I can go down as low as fifteen of them. My proposal was thirty. Um, I can go down as low as fifteen and still stay under the VMT threshold and that's that third option. Um, the way we've done math, there's been a little bit of difference and that's why I got informed here two minutes before the start of the meeting. So that third option would be fifteen ADUs and, and ten duets, um, as opposed to doing the original proposal at, at thirty ADUs. Um, and unfortunately, there's just no way that I can provide zero ADUs in, in this proposal. Um, but, you know, I did talk to HCD and, you know, they're very pro-ADUs and your six-cycle draft has a lot of ADUs and is counting on the ADUs. So it sure seems to me that that would be part of the plan for Reno. So I don't know if you guys want to, if you have questions or want to talk about this specific issue. I, I realize it's probably the one that we're the furthest apart on.
I would agree. Commissioner Toledo, do you have any comments about this particular subject?
Yes, um, so I, I, this project, just, just to throw it out there to be completely sincere is I've been, um, yes, no, yes, no, you know, things come up. Um, but, you know, what gets me, you know, you've been through this process already for two years. So I just feel that, um, you've been at it for quite some time now. I wasn't here at that time. Um, but the ADU, I just, I don't see, you know, I live in affordable housing, you know. Um, we did a self-help program for, my husband and I, for an actual home, single home. But I can't see someone living in just a small little area. I mean, that's all I have for now. I still, I know we're going to continue to talk about it, but, um, I, I'm just sharing my thoughts with you for now.
Commissioner Wade?
Yeah, um, I, I, I'm, I'm of two minds as well in, in a lot of respects, but I'm very much oriented around the rules and the laws and the ordinances and I, I guess people know that about me by now, hopefully. But, um, so it's, it's hard for me to get my mind around how these variances from the, from the affordable housing ordinance in San Benito County result in more affordable units than would otherwise be provided. Um, it's fine to do a variance if that's the case, but if that's not the case, then I'm, I'm, I'm kind of baffled as to how, you know, regardless of the merits, I'm, I'm not trying to say that, that you're not trying to do a good thing here. I'm not trying to say that you're not trying to do what you can to provide affordable housing. I'm just not sure that it works on this site, on this property, on this, this development under, under the ADU. I, I'm sorry, I'm rambling.
I think you expressed your thoughts well. Commissioner Ring hidden. Um, well, I don't want to ramble, but, and I think you've done, bent over backwards and done everything you can to answer our questions and be helpful and adjust your plan. Can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you. You know, the affordable housing part of it, it, it still baffles me in that what some of the people have mentioned, if you buy a home and you're not just owning really and responsible for renting somebody else's, if something bad happens, you get a horrible tenant that destroys the place, who's, who's liable for that? I just, it just, it seems odd and I'll have to try to wrap my mind around the fact that you're gonna sell a house in the backyard portion of it that's the ADU. You have no control over. That, that's just, that's tough for me. And that's the joy of what I'm saying. Commissioner Scaliuti?
Yes, um, one question. Why are not we following the ordinance that the county has set forth? We have ordinances, like Mr. Lee says.
We have ordinances, like Mr. Lee says, we follow the rules. And all of a sudden, this one comes before us and all of a sudden we're deviating from our rules. It's the very first one to come before us, which is the ADU. And all of a sudden we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and all this ordinance time, and like the man later said, we're not gonna need it. So why do we waste the money and why are we switching? And why wasn't this taken care of when the EIR came out or when it first started? Why wasn't all this taken into, into account?
So, uh, so there is alternative mechanism, mechanism provided, uh, in there. It does not specify how many additional units. It does not specify what areas can you de, deviate from the ordinance and which areas you can't. Um, it doesn't include those details. And so it's really a policy decision for the Planning Commission to review and recommend and for the board to ultimately, uh, make. It is however, required that alternative mechanism be included in order for, um, our ordinance, uh, to, uh, for us to be able to have an inclusionary ordinance. It's, it's one of the requirements that does need to be in there. Um, so what is presented before you, uh, yes, is the first housing project, um, that has come through. Um, and there's multiple options, you know, for you to consider, but it's a policy decision. How, how many units is, is, is it, uh, to, that needs a requirement? Uh, what should the square footage of this be? Well, how many bedrooms should that be that's for you to consider tonight?
And just to follow up, uh, on that question, Mr. Lee said that the Board of Supervisors wanted the threshold of the VMT. The project could be below the threshold. Does this mix of units come into play there as far as getting it under the threshold?
Correct. You need, um, in order to get under the threshold, you need a minimum of fifteen, uh, deed restricted low income units. Um, that's how the VMT works. It, it doesn't necessarily specify whether it be ADUs, direct single families, just that it's fifteen deed restricted, um, low income units. Uh, they looked at the ADUs in, in particular, um, due to, uh, being able to finance that number of units at that income level.
Okay. Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yes, I'm like Mr. Ringhaden. I'm having an issue with people living next to me that I have no control over. That to me, even though the, the gentleman said the last meaning that people do it, that doesn't compute in my little simple brain. So I'm having a hard time with that one. I, there's no way I can see someone doing that. Well, I can't control my destiny. And like the lady said, if somebody breaks their leg, I'm not gonna be responsible for it. So this doesn't make any sense to me.
So in the, in, we had, um, different responses via email. We had, uh, a couple meetings with, um, you know, as I discussed with, you know, different jurisdictions and, um, um, nonprofit. And, uh, there's a couple different, um, we still need to make a determination on how we would look at those rentals. Um, but there's a few different options that would be considered. Um, there would be looking at, you know, the homeowner is basically, um, you know, response, ultimately responsible or, uh, having the, a third party rental, uh, management. The county ultimately would not be the, we're not a, a rental management company. So we would not be doing, um, the rental management. We would have to be doing monitoring and so that would come into play. But, uh, that's where the county does, but we're not so, um, whether it's the option of the, uh, prop, uh, the property owner having to be, uh, the property manager or, um, a third party that is yet to be determined. Those are some of the options, um, that were to be considered as we look at, um, that plan as part of the commission.
So like, if we continue with that option and people don't wanna have the county or the government involved in their lives, they can be private. It's not gonna be forced down your throat. If you miss.
No, but they would need to comply and, and, uh, with that it would be rented, um, to someone with, that needs that income level. We talked about, um, you know, how to maybe do some of that monitoring. Um, you know, one option that was discussed was, you know, sending, uh, annual letters that, um, they would, uh, you know, send, uh, verify that the person living there didn't exceed a certain income requirement. Um, maybe that the property owner signs, uh, has, uh, signs under, uh, perjury that is being rented to someone below that income, uh, level. Um, you know, so, so those were some of the items discussed, um, you know, but that plan is not finalized as the plan is part of the commission.
So you're trying to tell me that when I, I purchase a home there and I have an ADU, a junior ADU connected to my home, you're gonna tell me that the person can only make so much from you to rent it to him? You're gonna force that down my throat?
Um, it would, it would be, it would be a deed restriction on that property.
That's all, thank you.
Anything else before I go? Commissioner Wade?
Uh, yeah, it just, it, it occurs to me that there's, there's a lot of unknowns still. And I know, I know we've been through this for a long time already, but it seems to me as though we should have this locked down in terms of who's gonna be, I mean, not necessarily the specific party, but at least the nature of, of the, uh, the, the rental management, et cetera, before we decide that we're going to approve this recommendation to the board or anything like that. It seems like we, we need that to be fleshed out. Just my opinion.
Commissioner Toledo?
And I agree because of the unknown, there's a lot of vague, um, where there's just a lot of unknown that's, that, that's gonna happen. You know, people can just say, yes, I'll sign here and say they make this amount because I don't have to show proof that they make a certain amount of income. Um, and would it be, when you say income level, would it be like section A or those types of programs?
Eighty percent AMI or below. And that, and that specific dollar amount varies depending on the number of, um, your house size.
Okay, so, so they wouldn't have to show proof?
So that was one of the things we talked about was that annually they would show proof, um, either by W twos or K stubs, uh, that they're needing that income.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ringhaden?
I, I would, uh, respectfully disagree that you are getting into property management. And that if there was something and you didn't do your due diligence vetting somebody, that it wouldn't be the homeowner that would be responsible, it would be you. I'll say that.
Okay.
You've submitted, excuse me, uh, Mike Durkey, uh, Legal Counsel for Billings. Uh, you have submitted through your, uh, ARMA to, uh, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, a housing element draft, your six cycle draft. You have put in there a hundred and thirty-three ADUs, which you're promising to HCD that you're going to do. HCD wants you to do those because they're going to meet extremely low, very low and low. By design, that's what they do. And as Ariel said to you, those are mandated by state. Fifty to eighty percent, et cetera, are these different bands of income mandated to you to provide. Your regional housing need assessment by your San Benito cog told you that the county was mostly responsible for low and very low. Hollister gets most of the moderate in the other cities and so forth. Your allocation is low and very low. It's right in the report. It's in the draft that Abraham sent to the state. That's now currently pending and it's currently under investigation and you haven't been certified in a month. If you're not certified, then you'll be mandated to do all rezonings before you can do anything else. So you're in the hot seat right now. We have provided letters to you trying to explain, as Ariel has done an A-plus job doing, that you have decided that ADUs are one of your ways out to meet your state responsibilities. And at the very same time, the commission charged with leading planning in this county doesn't like them. Why did you put them in the draft that you're telling the state you're going to do? If when the rubber hits the road, you have no interest in them at all. This project needs to be approved tonight or denied tonight. Shoot your shot, whichever you prefer, do it. Because you think this is a little teeny theater. It's not. The entire state of California is looking at this place and Morgan Hill and Gilroy and other places who say to the state, we'll do it. But when a project actually comes up to make it so, you say no. Or let's continue it. You know, delayed justice is denied justice. We waited six weeks. We waited two years. We waited six years. We worked out every single problem you presented. We brought sewer to everybody. We brought water to everybody. We were told to bring down the VMT and we figured out a way to do it. And now at the eleventh and a half hour, you wanna talk about the veracity of ADUs? Why did you put them in your housing element? You're the ones who did it. You invited us to do it. And that housing ordinance, you can't make us do it. If you make us do it, it is a taking. You can incentivize development to do things and we were incentivized to do it. Because Bill Lee, despite the comments from people in the crowd, is a very, very good man. And he really wants to do right by this community. But he is not a nonprofit. He has to be able to do a balance sheet where by the time he's done, it made sense to do it. None of you work a job where you are not paid for your efforts. And the same is true when you put in homes. That's just the way it works. So he is stretching as far as he can to meet numbers that by law he does not have to meet. Why? Because he wants to be good to this community. So please, with respect, shoot your shot. If you're not comfortable with this project, say no tonight. And we'll move on. But we cannot die on the altar any longer. It is, we're death by a thousand cuts. So with respect, we don't wanna be continued to further investigate something that could have been asked six weeks ago, that could have been asked two years ago, that could have been asked six years ago.
We get the point. Thank you.
Chair, after your comments, I'm ready for a vote.
Oh, uh, well, we still have other issues to talk about. Um, I'm not a big fan of the J ADUs myself, just because I think there's, it leads to problems if you don't have a good tenant that you get, uh, restraining orders against each other and then you've got problems if there's, you know, some sort of issues. Um, having said that though, the board did mention they wanted you to solve VNT, so it leads us to this point. If I support these ADUs of any sort, it'll be one time only, regardless of what our housing element says or Rena. Those, uh, are, we had the plan for them. We don't have to build them. I'd like to point that out for the record. So, um, if we do it this time, it'll be a one time for me only. So that people out there know that this is their new solution is to build cheap housing to qualify for the, uh, inclusionary housing. Um, if, if we're gonna go forward with it, I would like option C. The fifteen one bedrooms and the ten duets with that language updated from nine to ten. That's all I have for this portion. If we could go back down the list, oop, oop.
Option three, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The few, the fewest J ADUs possible. And then we make sure that it doesn't happen again. Next item on the list, please. Oh, and by the way, I, I do appreciate you working with us, Bill. I know it's been a long road. You've, uh, made a lot of changes and I do appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that acknowledgement. Um, the next, uh, item, uh, was the, uh, single story housing. And I, I, there's actually one point of clarification I wanted to add to Ariel's presentation. So we've got up against the large parcels, which would be, there's only one house up against Lial at all. Um, and that's up against the residence, not, not the vineyards. Um, there's houses along the two five acre parcels to the west, um, Anderson and, uh, Bees. And then as you turn and you go up against dividend homes, the first homes are, are the ones that are closer between us and dividends. We've got one story there. And then as she pointed out, as you get further down, there's a trail on their side. There's open space on our side. But I would also point out that none of those dividend homes are restricted to one story. So they will be two story along there. The only restriction on dividend was, um, where they meet up against Harbor and Way. I think on each side of Harbor and Way, there's three houses on each side that were restricted to one story. Um, so as to not have two stories peering right onto those residences. That's how that was done. So I just wanted to clarify, um, it was a bit too much to go complete one story at the boundary. But obviously, it, it, from my seat of the bushead, it's reasonable for someone on a five acre parcel to not want a two story home up against them and peering in and so forth. So we did, we did solve that and we did solve the ones that were closer.
I, I think you met the spirit of our intent. Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions about this section? Next, please.
Okay. Uh, the Fairview Road, Fairview Road improvements. As Ariel explained, after I was here, I reached out to both neighbors and, um, I was able to sit down with Roger McDonald, who owns the more northerly of the two parcels on Fairview. Um, he doesn't wanna lose any of that land in the front because he planted trees there. And in his words, that's his screen to block him from both Fairview Road and the denser housing that's across the street. Um, the other parcel belongs to Paul Waddis. Um, you may or may not know who he is. Um, he's an elderly guy that has a construction company. That's a rental house. And I have left numerous messages for, actually, uh, to be exact. Um, basically called every week to his office and he hasn't returned any of his calls. I also do believe that Abraham sent a letter out, um, to both of those neighbors to let them know that I would be reaching out and what the nature of that was. Um, so that's why we proposed, you know, an alternative to getting this done would be to take our TIP money and throw it in, into a pot that's designated for this. And then the county could actually take the, uh, the ball and run. But I can't force, I can't force people to sell their property to me. So I could either just pay my TIP and it gets allocated however, which, you know, it's all calculated for, you know, our portion to Fairview and twenty-five and all the different roads. Um, or it could be dedicated towards that because part of, part of the traffic impact fee is to widen Fairview to, to, uh, to four lanes. But unfortunately, the amount of right of way that's there is just, it's not even enough for the pavement, let alone, uh, the, uh, the utilities. So I really didn't know what else I could come back to you with. We talked, there was also talk about acceleration and deceleration lanes. So we got involved both with, uh, Steve Loop and our traffic engineer. And so we've, we've got, coming south on Fairview, we had from day one a left turn pocket. And basically in the shadow of that, we can do an acceleration pocket. The traffic engineer didn't recommend it because at peak traffic counts, the number of cars that would pull out there would be so small that it wouldn't warrant whatever, I, I don't know how they do the calculation, but it wouldn't warrant it. Nonetheless, we can create it. It would essentially be in the shadow of that. But if we do do that, then, um, both Steve Loop and the traffic engineer recommends that you don't, that you don't do the flashing. You can crosswalk. So it really does kind of become a, an either or type of situation. And that's just safety driven, uh, as they both explained.
I have a whole lot of comments about that. Um, anyone have a comment? Commissioner Scagliotti, please.
And this goes to staff. When this gentleman brought this, how many years ago did you bring this to staff?
About four.
Four.
A formal application. I've been working on this since two thousand and six.
That's good. This is not on you, Bill. This is, staff looks at this and you show them where you wanna put this project. Fairview Corners has been approved, ready to go. It's got sidewalk, curb and gutter. At that point, they should have told you, Mr. Lee, we've gotta figure out something here before we go forward with this project. And unfortunately, nobody looked at the map. So now we're stuck again with a crooked Hickville Road, which is very sad for our community. And it's not on you, Mr. Lee. I don't, that staff should have caught that. And it wasn't the staff of today, it's the staff prior. But that should have been looked at. When they laid that map out in front of you, wait a minute, you're, you're not, wait, you're behind some people. We gotta figure this out before you run for it. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Yep. I would, I would agree. I think when the twenty fifteen general plan was amended and they put all the houses east of Fairview, there should have been a thought that went to, how are we gonna get the pedestrians safely along Fairview and across? Um, unfortunately, the planning department and the planning commission and the board of supervisors at the time apparently didn't consider pedestrian safety. Um, hopefully going forward, before the next application comes in, we can figure something out. Otherwise, we're gonna have a long protracted battle again. Um, in traffic studies and, and engineers, they may have the degrees, but I don't think it really matters. Common sense tells you that they may have the degrees, but I don't think it really matters. Common sense tells you that there needs to be a way for pedestrians pushing strollers along Fairview to get from dividend homes across, if that's where the pedestrian crossing is going to be. Unless the pedestrian crossing is going to be down by the, is there going to be a roundabout at uh Gavlin? You don't want pedestrians crossing there. I mean, an engineer might think that's a great idea, but I think they've screwed up all of our roads. So, and I don't think an acceleration lane going south makes a lot of sense. I mean, if you're going to work, I think most of them would go up Fairview. So I would think an acceleration lane going north would make more sense than one going south. And then we could get the pedestrian crossing, an acceleration lane and a turn lane, southbound. So that people in the evening have a safe place to wait while there's cars coming and going. That would be my thought, but I'm not an engineer. I just have common sense. Um, next item, unless anyone else has any comment?
Here, you mind if I, I just for clarity, we did look at the possibility of doing a northbound acceleration lane. There's telephone poles in the way that would have to be undergrounded and they would have to go onto the neighbor's property in order to be properly undergrounded.
Yeah.
Because if they were undergrounded now, then they would just have to be moved again later.
The, that's the county's failure to plan when they make a general plan.
Poor planning again. We, we did look at it. So
Yeah.
it sounds like at least the chair is saying that his preference would be to have the flashing beacon crossing as opposed to have the southbound
Correct.
turn pocket. And we're good either way. If you do decide to approve the project, we, it, we're happy to go either way.
I would like the consensus of the commission, no matter where we end up tonight, just so that the board of supervisors knows our thoughts. It makes sense to me.
Flashing thing makes sense to me. Flashing crosswalk, yeah, makes sense to me.
And and giving up this, this southbound acceleration lane to get the safe passage for pedestrians. Ariel.
You can modify that. And remove the um option for acceleration and just have the pedestrian crossing.
And then hopefully going forward, the county can pull its head out of wherever it is and get this figured out before the next application comes forward. Cause there's just no excuse. To me, this is incompetence. And it's not based on today's staff. This thing was done in twenty fifteen and we've sat here for going on ten years and we didn't actually plan for it. The infrastructure is just asinine to me. I'm so angry that this is what we do. This is the product of years of work. They worked on that general plan for what, fifteen years it took them? And this is what we get. It's inexcusable. And if we don't fix it going forward, expect problems from the planning commissioner at every turn.
Yeah, make a comment.
Commissioner Scagliotti.
Yes, we had a project before us last year that we approved and I asked for turn lanes and I couldn't get them because the traffic study said it wasn't, it wasn't required. And I missed, I witnessed almost a head on collision at that project three days ago. And I asked for turn lanes and and the traffic study from the people that the county said to go to for this applicant said it was good enough. And I almost witnessed a head on collision the other day. Ridiculous.
Next item, sir.
So the next item is the drop tax, um, which when I was here six weeks ago, I'd never heard of it, but I did quite a bit of research and I actually talked to both people at the city and the county. There's an outside company called H D L that both the city and the county use to make sure they're getting their proper share of sales taxes. And with the sales tax, it can be done either way. A contractor could, say the subcontractor's ordering trusses, he could order them from someone in Sacramento, have them delivered to the job site here, and he could pay Sacramento sales tax. What we have crafted here is to require him to have a local business license and to tell his supplier to taxes San Benito appointed delivery. And it is one hundred percent legal. I personally, of all the things that we've looked at, I think this is a fantastic idea and I would encourage, I don't know if it's you or the board or whoever, to look at wording for this in the future. To me, I mean, I live here, right? I mean, I, if I can spend my money here instead of out of town, I try. Sometimes I can't, but I try. Um, I think this is wording that should be pretty much standard for any, any project, commercial, residential, whatever. We created wording we think meets the spirit of that and and does that to be a condition of approval here.
Okay. And is there any kind of method of review that we figured out? Is anybody going to check on whatever developer ends up buying this and actually starts putting sticks up? Is there going to be any kind of method of review where we can say, are you getting, are your subs getting, well, are you getting a business license? Are your subs getting business licenses?
I would, I would defer to staff with respect to that.
It'd be nice if there's a way to chase it so that it actually happens, not just theoretical.
Um, so we could do um checks with uh Joe Paul and make, you know, making sure that that is so maybe
Compliance?
Yes, and we could include that into the condition
Please.
annual um monitoring.
Please.
Okay.
Does there support for that?
I have a question about that. So when um, um, what would you, what do you call it? Whoever is purchasing the items, um, whatever it is, right? Um, the business would come to our county and buy the license or how?
The, the, the contractor that's buying the wood would get his business license here and then tell whoever he's buying the wood from to make sure the sales tax gets paid to our county as opposed to anywhere else.
Right. So how would we verify that? You said you're going to check. Okay.
Um, so we would check uh sales taxes being um collected through Joe Paul.
Uh, yes.
That's just, okay.
Uh, through, yes, through the county. Right, county. Thank you.
Would there be?
Utter control.
Commissioner Ringhead. Have you figured out a way that if somebody's not in compliance, that what the penalties would be? If you're asking them to do the stop tax and you're clearly not seeing them compliant, what would be the, what would be their ramifications?
I was actually going to recommend a slight modification, the condition approval, actually an additional item, that H D L be informed of the project because they're the watchdog. Um, I think, and Commissioner Skagl, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what inspired this was the whole solar issue down in Panoche. And maybe that wasn't what inspired you?
Not for me. What inspired me was the Santana Ranch and all those tax driven dollars leaving our community. Thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for those thousand homes is gone.
So
Because nobody asked Mr. Anderson to do it. Because they were afraid of him. Well, I'm not afraid to ask you to do something that's not going to cost you any money. Right?
A- a- as you shouldn't be afraid to talk to me that way. Um, I, I, so Joe Paul was the one that I talked to at the county where I got most of my information. And Joe Paul explained what happened with the solar project down in Panoche. Um, the, they were supposed to do this and they didn't. And about half the taxes leaked. Once H D L caught wind of it, they actually made all the transactions be backed out and corrected. So San Benito County got their tax. So part of the, the thinking here is by making both the general contractor and the subs get San Benito County business licenses, they're, 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 they're on the radar. They're not slipping in under the cover of night, doing some plumbing and slipping out of town. Everybody knows they're here, which generally when you get a business license, that alerts your tax collecting agencies to be sending and requesting reports and following up. But I was going to suggest that as part of the compliance that um H D L be informed. Uh, you know, I don't know what your timing is, maybe with the first building permit or with, you know, final map approval or something, that this is coming. Because that way the enforcement arm that you, the county pays will at least have a heads up and will be watching for it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move on to the next item?
Yes, please.
So the last item was the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. When we revised the design to get the distance with the vines from the vineyard on the, the north, that actually put our road touching that property. So that actually allows, if Lial ever develops there on the, on the, on the north, um, I mean, he would, it'd be crazy not to take advantage of a road that's right there and continue to connect through. If you're in our project, you're able to connect into dividend and thereby get to Gavlin. There's also an undeveloped portion of my piece. Um, there's a road stub to it and it's being left. So presumably if that ever went someday, there could also be a second connection there to provide two from the Lial property into mine. But there is the one right now. So there to be able to get a bicycle from Santana Ranch or a pedestrian from Santana Ranch to Gavlin without traversing Fairview, that, that will be, that continuity will be there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Charlie came out this evening. Do we have questions for Charlie?
Yes, I do.
Sir, if you could please come to the podium. And we thank you for coming out on a dark evening.
Thank you, Mr. Commission and members of the, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the invite tonight. I am Charlie Bedola. I am your fire marshal. So what can I help you with tonight?
Commissioner Scagliotti. What concerns do you have that we need to address for fire issues and safety, safety issues? So for egresses, ingresses and the whole nine yards?
There, there is some concerns about the, the egress in and out. Okay, so I, I do hold people to the code. And with this code, this development does meet the code. Uh, my problem is with the development below, which is Fairview Corners. And I could quote the code and, and talk to you about that real quick, what the code says. I have it right here. So this is section one oh D, one oh six of our adopted uh fire code, where it talks about um multiple family residential developments, projects having more than one hundred dwelling units. Multiple, multiple family residential projects having more than one hundred dwelling units shall be equipped throughout with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads. Here's the exemption right after that. Projects having up to two hundred dwelling units shall have not fewer than one approved fire apparatus roads, access roads, where all buildings, including non-residential occupancies, are equipped throughout with approved automatic fire sprinkler systems. Everything has fire sprinkler systems in it. So this does meet that for that. And then we, and we do have established water there, too. We have hydrants that are meeting the, the, the set, the distance is required for our fire float also. So that's where I'm real happy with, I'm good with that. Um, D one oh seven point one, one or two family dwelling residential developments. Developments of one or two family dwellings where the number of dwelling units exceeds thirty shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads. Exemptions where there are more than thirty dwelling units on a single public or private apparatus access road and all dwelling units are equipped throughout with an approved automatic sprinkler system. Here's, here's, here's the kicker, though. The number of dwelling units on a single fire apparatus access road shall not be increased unless fire apparatus access road will connect with future development. Mr. Lee has connected with Street D for future development. Now it's Fairview Corners that's fighting it and does not want to connect to it. But once we connect Fairview Corners and we connect Gab, we have three points of access to be able to access it. So uh, Mr. Lee is complying because he has the width on, you want to pull up the um, I think it was your third slide? And it showed the roadway right through there. So my problem was with Mr. Lee, that it's meeting it and we don't need that third axis, but it was Fairview Corners right below, where we need to make sure that they do provide that axis because it'll provide for Gavlin, Fairview Corners and the land of Lee. So how do we make them comply? Back in two thou- thousand seventeen, when I came up here and I started talking with them, I, yeah, that's, let me pull that one up. Um, the plant, uh, the planner at the time went behind my back and disagreed with is that the first slide? I think when we did this, did it from the target area from here? Or for, with the one that sort of now? Oh, right there. So that's Street D right there, just Fairview Corner. You see how wide the street is right there and then it narrows down. So they didn't want to provide an accessway for, right there, for the traffic. So Mr. Lee has the minimum width required or the, actually a good width and then below here, they didn't want it connected. So at the time I had a planner that was fighting me tooth and nail and then they continued on. I gave my recommendations and I let them know that, hey, we have to do it for connectivity. So if you look at um Santana Ranch, they built for connectivity. If you look to the south, they have those two dead end streets that go right in there. We built what, way over four hundred residences? And we were all bottlenecked into that one place before they opened the other side of it. So that, to me, that was horrible, but we still built for the future connectivity. So we have those two white plank fences that are going to the south. So they're building for the future. So he's building for the future here, too. So I'm, I'm good with that. They're all sprinkler. We have established water. We just need to make sure that this other development does connect and have it as wide that we need for the future.
So we, we have to look
Okay, Sean, how do we do that?
Well, that's the director of planning and building and the director of public works that need to make sure that dividend homes doesn't get away with that.
And why would the county allow us, a planner, a county planner, go behind the back of the fire marshal and do something like this? That is ridiculous.
It, it is, it is. And I'm very upset at the time when he was doing it. And it wasn't none of, it wasn't none of, it, and I'm very happy with who, the, the, the staff that we have now. And they kind of got thrown into a corner, but they didn't like what I had to say. They supported the developer and then they totally disregarded what I had to say. And I'm not, I'm just saying, we need to try to fix that. We want to try to fix that.
We're, we're going to fix it.
With the future and I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, we are um with Charlie, we try to work very closely, not only with him, but all agencies. We do what we, what we call a development review committee. And we get the plan and we try to send it off to every, all the different agencies, including the fire department. And um we try to have everybody provide a comment. And although the planning department is more of the, the gatekeeper of the projects, it is very important for us to take in everybody's consideration, everybody's comment, to try to formulate these draft conditions of approval and, and make any potential changes that are needed to a project.
So current staff do not write public works conditions, current planning staff do not write fire conditions. It comes straight from fire as our current practice now.
Sounds good. Commissioner Scagliotti, you have any other?
Yeah, still doesn't rectify our problem for Mr. Lee. We got to get that opened up. How are we going to do that? I mean,
Before
not his fault again. County is San Benito. Hello. Well, I understand what I'm, I understand.
Director of Public Works is graciness with his presence. And yes, sir.
So fortunately, because uh Mr. Bedoya has been involved with Fairview Corners, they are installing that connection there. They are. They didn't originally, as Charlie mentioned, but they are installing it. So there is a connection. So I just want to clarify.
Okay, fantastic. See, I told you we had a good guy here. We got, we got to keep an eye on these people. Thank you. Any other questions for Charlie before we, whatever, whatever it is we're going to do?
So the connection will be there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Any, we, we went down the list, right? We covered all the items. Okay, back to the commission, unless staff has anything to add?
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Anything to add?
Nothing to add, just ready to answer any additional questions.
Back, uh, Commissioner Toledo.
Thank you very much, Bill Lee, for um the, the whole project. I, I mean, just the runaround, I think you've been receiving. So um I really, um, I feel, I feel for you that you've been having to go back and forth. Um, and I appreciate everyone's comments that came today.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Wade?
Yeah, I just, for the record, I, I find it somewhat offensive that we're being accused of uh not supporting A D U's when in point of fact, my objection is not A D U's as a, as a solution, but rather this particular flavor of A D U where we really don't know who's going to be managing it or how it's going to be managed. So that's my only comment.
Commissioner Ringhaden. I, I think that um we do understand everything that everybody's explained. There's just a lot to it. It's a, it's, there's a lot of moving parts here to consider. But I, I, we are, we are, I think for myself, I'm listening to you, listening to everybody, taking into consideration. Um, so I, and I just wanted to make sure that, that, that you guys out there know that we are listening to everything that you are saying. We're not trying to not, not understand the sprinkler issue that, that is part of it. Even with that said, it's tough for me to think that somebody's going to live in my backyard that I don't get to run out to, I don't have a say, and if they get hurt, I'm responsible as the owner. That's how I think that I'm interpreting this, that the county's not going to be responsible. The person, A D U, could do, could be a great person, but there's always that chance that he may not be. And then what do we do then with the homeowner who's stuck with this person they don't get along with?
Depend, is it okay to respond?
Absolutely.
To the chair? Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, we, uh, as we developed the affordable housing plan, um, we, you know, one of the options is that the homeowner is the property manager. So they decide who comes into their rental. you know, one of the options is that the homeowner is the property manager. So they decide who comes into their rental. Uh, their, the, the main item on the county is making sure it's rented to the correct income level. So if that hopefully addresses your concern.
So they do have the option of managing it themselves, therefore they do have a say?
Correct.
That, that sounds better than the other, but I still don't want to repeat using J ADUs or ADUs to meet inclusionary housing goals going forward. Anything else before, Commissioner Scagliotti?
Uh, yeah, just one comment. I do understand what's going on. I don't need to be ridiculed. That was not nice. Thank you.
Okay. So we have, uh, staff recommends the San Bernardino County Planning Commission adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash next, approving the following after discussion and deliberation of the conditions of approval to be adopted as part of the vesting tentative subdivision map. We have one certification of the environmental impact report, et cetera. We have two, adopt a vesting tentative subdivision map, subject to the Board of Supervisors' approval, the zone change in PUD combining district. Three, recommended the Board of Supervisors' zone change in PUD, well, that should say combining district and affordable housing plan for approval. And number four, uh, which we haven't talked about, is recommended the Board of Supervisors' request to waive the parks and recreation impact fee.
That had been presented at the last planning, Commissioner.
But we haven't talked about it this evening. Um, as Mr. Derkey said, the state is watching closely. Uh, we haven't approved a development in four years. So we're kind of in a, and our housing element is not certified, so we are out of compliance. So it leaves us in a, in a prickly position. And I would say that I'm, Sacramento's almost forced us to approve this. And it's a, not a good feeling and I hope we never let our housing element lapse again because those people in Sacramento don't really care about our community. They don't care how much traffic we shove north and if you have a three or four hour commute, that's not on the applicant, that's on those people that you elect to represent you in Sacramento. Consider that. So I would say that, uh, with the changes that we, we discussed, uh, changing it to fifteen J ADUs and ten duets, uh, changing the language about getting rid of the southbound acceleration lane, making sure we have the pedestrian crossing and the other verbiage regarding sales tax, one-story homes on those lots mentioned. Does that cover all the changes that we made?
The H M I will watch off on sales tax?
Yep. And the, uh, language regarding the, uh, review of the sales tax. I will make a motion to adopt everything, including the recommendation that the Board of Supervisors waive the parks and recreation impact fee.
I'm sorry, before we do that, could I just point out that in the conditions of approval, it appears as though condition fifty-five, condition thirty-four and condition twelve are essentially identical.
Could you repeat those numbers?
Condition number fifty-five on our page one four five four. Okay? Also condition thirty-five on our page one four five one.
Oh, mhm.
And condition twelve on our page one four four eight, all appear to be the same thing.
They are, very similar. But is there a need to strike, uh, leave twelve and strike the other two staff? And it, it's repetitive, but maybe there's a purpose somewhere buried in the language.
No, I mean, if it doesn't hurt anything, I suppose there's no harm in leaving it in. It's just odd.
Uh, so, um, actually as staff kind of mentioned earlier, um, when another agency provides specific conditions of approval, we don't change those. So there's, uh, the planning condition and then there was public works and we both agree on the conditions and we put it in different verbiage. So, um, we could just, uh, remove the repetitive.
Well, they, they don't contradict each other, so maybe it's fine.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table that was made unhappily by the chair. Is there a second? Commissioner Toledo.
With your motion that you, uh, waived the fees of the park?
Because they're actually constructing the park, so they're paying for the, not only are they giving the land for the park, but they're paying to construct the park. So they're just asking for the normal park fees to be waived because they're actually doing the work. Usually the county builds the park.
So they're building it?
Yes, and I'm sure that the developer will do it, uh, much more efficiently than the county could possibly do it.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any other discussion before we get for a second?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Scagliotti.
Um, I don't like being forced to do this also. I think it's an awful thing that we have to do this because of poor planning and lack of it and the state telling us what we have to do. I'm tired of government being in my pocket and telling me where I gotta go and what I can't do. Unfortunately, they are watching us, like Mr. Com- Commissioner Gibson said, so I will second it.
Um, good to go for a roll call vote?
Absolutely. Um, uh, District One Vincent Ring Hayden?
No.
Okay, District Two Richard Way?
No.
District Three Robert Scagliotti?
Yes.
District Four Robert Gibson?
Yes.
District Five Celeste Toledo Boca Negra?
No.
No, that is a three to two, um, denial of the project. Um, through the chair.
Yes.
Would you like to, um, make another motion, um, in order to have any findings for that vote?
So the commission, you wanna vote for denial and then have the staff come up with findings or you could come up with findings for your votes? Is that the will of the three commissioners that voted no?
I, I don't understand the question.
So we, it, so basically you wanna deny it. So now we have to have findings for denial.
Oh, yeah.
So that we can legally back up our votes. Kidnapped the compilation of the commissioners and the staff. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion to deny the project and to work on findings? I mean, how would, is there a timeline for that?
Could, could you, um, if, if there could be just, uh, the basis for the, the no?
So is there a particular legally backed reason why you're voting no? And if you could give staff those reasons so they can put them in the denial?
Well, is it legally to say that we're being threatened by the state and that's why we're denying? No.
Has to be something about the project.
My, my issue would be, uh, well, several fold, but, uh, number one, I, I, I don't think that this complies with the exemption from the affordable housing ordinance. I don't think this qualifies for that exemption.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is there a time that we can meet with staff and discuss these items? Has to be done with the public here tonight?
Can, I, I, uh, staff, uh, through the chair, uh, staff can, um, can, uh, put together, uh, findings on that basis.
And another finding would be, um, the for, the how affordable housing ordinance, um, doesn't meet the requirements. Um, as far as, um, my understanding with one of the speakers, um, and then having to do with the small ADU units.
Okay. So basically the, one of the findings will be that it doesn't comply with our inclusionary housing ordinance. Okay, are there any other findings that the three commissioners would like to add so that staff has a defense of our denial?
Sure. Uh, one more, if, if I may. Um, the, uh, the E I R, um, we didn't actually certify it, right? I mean, because of, because of the motions failed. Um, I'm not sure that I would have voted to certify it even if that had been an independent motion. Uh, I'm, I do have concerns about the, the method by which the V M T was calculated in, in the revised E I R. Uh, I understand the, the justifications for it that were incorporated in there and, uh, it still strikes me as kind of a, a novel approach to V M T calculation.
Again, that's coming from Sacramento. An unfortunate group. Okay, are we done with findings for staff? So is there a motion to deny the project and come back with findings for denial?
I'll motion.
I'll second. Do a roll call, please.
Okay, uh, Vincent Ring Hayden, District One?
Yes.
Uh, Richard Way, District Two?
Yes.
Uh, Robert Gibson, District Three? Oh, I'm sorry, Robert Scagliotti, sorry. Uh, there's so many, two Roberts right next to each other.
No.
Robert Scagliotti?
No.
No, okay, Robert Gibson.
No.
Uh, Celeste Toledo Boca Negra?
Yes.
Okay, so that is a three to two for denial and coming back with, um, findings. Can, uh, through the chair, may I, um, in, are we setting a special meeting to come back with those findings? Uh, through the chair, can I, um, bring for signature, uh, denial findings?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, well, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Welcome to adjourn, do the session.